Now, before we start the meeting, I'm just going to say that this meeting tonight is being video and audio taped, and if anyone else is video and/or audio taking, please let us know. Okay. We're going to go two minutes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 17th, 2015, as so ready.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. We'll go to all business. Any all business. Let's do that.
No.
Mr. Bernardi?
Um, no.
Okay. Then we'll go to comments and concerns. Does anybody wish to address the board? We got it from back?
Um, I have a question about the town meeting. I thought last year at town meeting, we voted to have moved the town meeting to June?
No, we didn't.
Oh, that didn't pass?
We never put it before the, we never put it before the town. Westbrookfield voted to move theirs to June. We didn't vote to move ours.
Did we, did we bring it up at the, um, town meeting? Oh, I thought we did.
No, we talked about it in a selectman's, in a selectman's meeting one time, but we know where we stand financially, and we figured there was no sense in pushing it off into June.
I have another question. Um, there's, I'm curious why we are being asked to do our articles for town meeting early. Um, the paperwork, and when you call the office, it says that we have to have articles in 14 days before the town meeting, but now we're being told that we have to have them in by April 2nd, so I'm curious. When did that change?
Uh, the board always gets them. In order to have them in by a certain time, and in order to get, board has to decide if they're gonna put them on, if they're non-particienary articles. The board wanted them in by this Thursday, I think, or September.
April 2nd.
And the board is meeting on Saturday morning in a working session to go over what articles have been requested, so we can see how they fit in with the, uh, meeting itself. And then we have a meeting next Saturday, the Saturday after this Saturday, to go over the budget and so forth. So it's strictly so we can get them done in time, to get them to finance, so that they can vote on them, so that they can get them into the book they have to put together.
Okay. All right, I was, 'cause when you call some, you get two different stories when you call the town office. And then, I have one sure thing. I appeared here the beginning of February to question police payroll practices, and it was your suggestion that I send a letter to the chief, which I did the next day. Um, here's my certified registered receipt that I got back. Um, I didn't ask any questions about why this gentleman is not working for the town. Um, I asked five questions about the payroll. Um, I did send you a copy, and I haven't, and I, I provided my email address, and he hasn't even bothered so much as to acknowledge that he received it, let alone answer these things. And I'm just a little curious, because I know that there was a court case where Detective Chase was supposed to testify, and that was in February, and the chief called the district attorney and had the dates changed for two months later, and because Mr. Chase couldn't make it. So I'm just curious, we, we're paying somebody who's, who's not working, and it seems that one day we need him to work, he didn't show up, so I'm just curious why I couldn't get the common decency of response to these five questions.
We will check and see. Could you pull that, that copy of that letter out, and I'll talk to the chief?
He's on vacation.
He won't be, yeah, I think he comes back tomorrow. I think he comes back tomorrow. I'll find out. I'll call. Okay, I'll get a copy of your letter. As far as the other man you mentioned, the board can't say anything at this time.
Well, no, I don't expect to do, but it just seems kind of strange that we have somebody that now we've paid seven months, we might be paid two more months, and, you know, there's a court case and he's supposed to be a witness, and we have to change the court case because he can't, he's, he's unavailable. It just seems a little odd to me. So I just, I, I just, and then tied into the fact that I, I couldn't even get an answer for five questions.
We'll, we'll see what we can do about the questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments and concerns? Yes?
I have a question. The two police cruisers that you put up for auction?
Yes.
Uh, right now, the bids are $150 per cruiser. Is that gonna be profit to the town if it stays at $150 each? Or is there a certain percentage that you have to pay to the auctioneer?
I don't know the answer. I know in most cases, the money comes to the town. I don't know what you, what, if the cost for the auctioneer is, but...
Yeah, but wouldn't you note that if you put them up for auction? I should ask what's your percentage?
We should put that up for auction. We didn't.
Right. Chief put that up for auction, and there is a percentage that the auctioneer's paid.
We just don't know, I don't know what that percentage is. We'll find out.
Right, but we could ask the chief what that is, but he has to put those up for auction. They're his department vehicles.
That would be, to another point, we discussed auctioning off all circles of vehicles in town, including what's at the highway department, and it's supposed to be done collectively. Now, all of a sudden, two police vehicles get thrown in. One week, we gotta get rid of them. One week to bid, that's it. You get more for scrap. Somebody wants to get rid of the expedition? It's a bump. I would stop that auction, though. I would.
We will see what we can find out.
I'm not exactly sure, Mr. Chair, but I think we have to auction. I don't think we can actually sell those for scrap. I, I think legally, it's almost like a reverse auction. I don't know if we can take municipal property like that and turn it around and sell it. Like, if we wanted it for scrap, if it was gonna gain us more money, I'm not sure if we can do that. We'd have to check. I'm, I'm almost like saying it's a reverse auction.
I know it was considered at one time for scrap, and the reason we didn't do it. We'll look into it and find out exactly what it is. I don't know the answer, but I know if the money, if money that comes in after the auction is paid, comes, goes into free cash.
Give it away if you know what's so...
We can't do that either.
You are, in reality.
Well, I understand, but we can't, we can't. The only, the only people we can give it to, we could give it to a, another municipality or another subsidiary of the state and/or municipality. That's the only thing we can give it to. We can't give it to anybody. We can't say, hey, we can get more money, so we'll go there. There's certain outlines, we have to do outline by the state.
Why was there such a rush, a one-week period, in and out?
I think you told, sooner than that. I would've said maybe two or three weeks you started to work the process.
Came online when?
Well, I think, I think the, the, to tell him to get rid of them as soon as he could, and to find out which way we could do it, came from the board right after he got the new ones in, okay? And I know they called Copart very shortly after that, and the board was aware that they were going up. Um, we'll find out. I can't answer the question, but we'll try to see what we can get. We shouldn't be able to get an answer on themes and everything else.
Is that tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
We can call.
Yep. All right, any other comments and concerns?
Last week, you assigned Mr. Lavash to look into the two vehicles that were on the road with rejection. He was supposed to investigate the situation.
Right, the, right now, it's still under investigation, not only by Mr. Lavash, but by another entity. When we receive our report from him, we will definitely give it to everybody that wants it. So we're not, we're not making any comments on, but there is another investig, ongoing investigation.
They were out this week.
All right. It would've been done last week, as I said, but we had to wait for this week for certain reasons. But we will, once that comes in from the person that did the, uh, the investigation, that person was not a member of the Town of Warren, nor did any member of the board talk to him prior to that, they just sent him the paperwork that we had.
And his purpose is to what?
His purpose was to interview, to interview the people, some of the people involved, or all the people involved, and report a, report, and issue a written report to the board of selectmen with recommendations as to how to handle it.
The thing is, the people that drove the vehicles, were they told they have to?
That's the question, that's what we're trying to find out.
Okay.
Okay? Question wasn't only who drove it, the question was why it was driven, the question was what the ramifications were, and the question was who told who to do what.
And that includes insurance liability to the town?
Okay. That includes everything.
All right.
All right, any other comments and concerns? We'll go to correspondent.
We have an email from Timothy J. O'Brien, Warren Emergency Management, requesting a response from the Board of Selectmen regarding the questions raised in the letter on March 9th, 2015. The information is needed to make a submission for the May special slash annual town meeting deadline of April 2nd, 2015.
Well, we said we had two intent articles on there, one for the $500 to pay, which would be a warrant article to pay for, uh, two stipends. And there was another one for $500 to increase their, their line item, and we said that that would, that actually wouldn't be an article, it would be a, it would be a increase in their line item on the omnibus budget. So those two intent articles is there. I think Loretta told us that his intent was to submit an article anyways. So we will take that article along with all the other articles, and we're reviewing all articles to go on the special and annual town meeting on Saturday, to decide what we're gonna put on, what we're not.
We have a letter from Stephen M. Coleman, Jr., Chief, Auburn, Mass, Fire District 7, inviting elected and appointed officials to attend a technical rescue drill in Charlton, Mass. on April 14th, 2015.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
I spoke to Chief Adam Lavoy. He indicated that he will be attending this mock drill. Also, there's two members of his staff that are participating in that program, and he strongly encourages one of the board members to attend the stuff.
When is that?
April 14th.
Which is, Monday?
That's a Tuesday.
Remind me. What time is it?
It's, uh, excuse me, 4:35 PM in Charlton.
Remind me. Okay. Before we go any further, I was sitting at home last night at about, no, 9:30 or so, and received a call from the fire chief. Fire chief went out on an ambulance call yesterday and made a successful call through the, successful journey to where the call was. On his way back, the ambulance started making all kinds of noises, and it's now been, it's now pulled off the road, and it seems like there's a very good possibility it might be in the engine that there's, that there's a problem with. Now, that engine is the one we replaced a year ago. So it is going to be brought, or somebody's going to come out to determine what the problem is, and as soon as we know anything else, we will definitely let you people know. Now, also, even though our ambulance is off the road, if there's a call that comes into our, into our ambulance service, someone will respond, whether it be, we have to call the neighboring town in, but the ambulance will still be all available. So just letting you know in case. All right. Mass Department of Transportation went to Recovery Assistance Program, it's a award contract for $43,623. That is that pothole program through the state, and Warren's been told that they could spend up to $43,623 fixing potholes, but it would all have to be, uh, delivery receipts and so forth in order to do it. So, and I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Sign that contract.
Second?
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On the, on option number eight for Arbor Day proclamation, I had spoken to the tree warden last week. He was getting me the documents. Unfortunately, they are not available this evening, so I said it's too table.
All right, let's table until next week. Now, before I do this, on this second page...
Yeah, it'll be that very first line there.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, this says contractor.
And now I'll have Tom clerk, uh, fix the seal thing.
Okay. Arbor Day proclamation will be on hold until next meeting. Something's missing here.
No.
How about Carrie? Under...
Gentlemen, you are correct. My apologies. I, um, the, the posting was amended, but I failed to amend the posted agenda this evening. Um, we do have tax collector in the audience wishing to address the board. My apologies.
All right.
Only a minute of your time. I'm just here essentially to try to get your support for my budget request. Um, I'm trying to make a change in it. Up until now, the salary line, um, for the tax collector has been salary of $26,412 plus fees. I don't know if you remember, last year, there was all kinds of confusion about what kinds of fees I'm entitled to, and whether or not I'm entitled to them at all, which resulted in the fees portion being pulled right out of the omnibus budget, and I had to ask to have it put back in on the town hall floor. For that reason, just because apparently there's still a little bit of confusion about which ones I'm entitled to and all, um, I'm, I'm asking to have the fees part removed and to add $15,600 to the salary line, um, for, for a salary of $42,012. Now, in each of the past four fiscal years, um, the fees that the tax collector has been entitled to, uh, in 2011, 11 fiscal year, it was $16,280. In fiscal 12, it was $17,495. In fiscal 13, it was $15,915. And in fiscal 14, it was $16,205. So the salary entitled, the fees entitled, the collector has been entitled to, has been higher than what I'm asking for. I'm asking for that change for a couple of reasons. Um, I'd like it just to be clear to the taxpayers on the budget line what my salary is. Uh, number two, you know, I don't want every year to have to explain which fees I'm entitled to and why I'm entitled to them, and get, you know, town council opinion on those fees and entitlements. And number three, should I wind up retiring from the town, I don't want there to be any question about what I'm entitled to for pension. I want the, the salary line to be straightforward and clear, so, and I'm just looking for your support in that. I have, I have the reports, um, you know, with the totals for the last four fiscal years of the fees that have been collected, that I'm entitled to, which I demand fees and more fees.
Questions?
No, I...
Question?
What's the, the $15,000 figure again?
The $15,000 was $15,000...
$600?
Nine hun, oh, oh, did I, did I...
The amount you had, yes.
Oh, $15,600, which is smaller than what's been collected in any of the past four fiscal years. I didn't go back farther, because the collector was entitled to more types of fees before that, but since the federal census in 2010 indicated the population was above 5,000, there's, there's one type of fee that's fallen off. I didn't think it was intended.
Bear with me for one second.
So this will definitely change your annual amount regarding retirement, going into which county, because fees are not, you can't calculate fees into your base share salary for retirevers, is correct?
I'm not really sure about that. I think, I think that has not been a problem, but just going forward, I just wanna, I wanna erase any kind of gray area, any kind of, you know, mushy kind of stuff, so...
I'm just trying to see where that would put us in line with other people in our financial sector. Who got one here to choose treasuries?
Well, and also, I think, as far as that goes, most pertinently, you know, you should look at what Debbie, which actually was a little bit more in her last year here, but we're doing the same job. You know, it was a seamless transition, except for the whole kerfuffle about fees.
Can't believe I can't find it.
I think he's around 43 or 44. I'm not sure exactly.
What are you looking for?
Treasure?
Looking for treasure.
I got it.
This would be $42, $42,12. No, wait a minute. More than that. Yeah, $42,12.
Correct.
That was what her total would be? What's the board's budget?
I, I don't really have an issue with doing the way that the fees are putting into the salary. I'm just not sure if I'd like to resource the amounts, the amount, excuse me, a little bit. I'm not, I don't know, do we need to look around this around towns, communities, or just gonna take them? I don't know, I'm not sure.
I have, I have surveys done in December by the Mass Collective Treasuries Association. I have one for towns with populations from 1 to 5,000, and one for populations with 5,000 to 10,000. It indicates the annual budget, the population, title, a lot of towns have treasurers slash collectors, um, whether they're, like, they're appointed, years in office, how many hours they work a week, I'd be happy to...
Sure. Is there copies or...
Oh, you can have, I only made one copy of each, but I can, I can get more, you know, till around tomorrow.
Let's see, one's $5,000.
What is the one with $5,000? Sorry?
All the different towns and what they pay their treasurer.
And collectors, yeah.
And collector.
Yeah, see, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of kind of moving parts on there, some are treasurer collectors, some are treasurer, some are collectors.
How'd you pump, I'm sorry, here, how'd you pump up the number 15.6 if you had it in?
Well, because typically, every week, I take 300 in fees, regardless what I collect. Um, that always leaves some behind in the budget, and that's just 300 times 52.
Because I'm just, the last four years average is higher than that, so I'm just, I don't, I'm okay, I'm fine with that, just curious how you come up with that.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't, well, see, I, you know, I, I can't speak to what Debbie took, um, but I think, um, I think I take less in fees this year than she took in her final year, but she had, you know, 20 years in span.
Do you think the fee collections will go down if it's not part of the salary? I mean...
No, no.
I, I, my impression is that the recent fees are tapped in there because people want our tax collector being aggressively going after the fees to pay the salary, so...
I, well, I mean, I, if I, if I looked at that as an incentive, then I would, then I would probably take all the fees I collected.
I understand.
And in this, in this case, all, whatever is over, um, you know, will go into the, will stay in the general fund.
I don't have a problem with the, to do it, per se, because I do think that the, any money that comes in fees, I don't think it can, I don't think it's part of retirement, because I think we went through this once before.
So does that mean that her budget would have to be amended, go back before finance, then before us? And then if somebody wants to raise a question on the board, she'd have to get up and speak regarding it. It's in front of finance now.
The board has the right, has the right to, to request that it gets, that the finance that gets added together, and that it's all salary rather than, rather than fees. But it would have to be, if we, if we were to do that, it would have to be with an agreement from everyone involved not to put the, the higher figure before the town, and, and, it's not a shock, Carrie, okay, I understand, not, if not to put, if we put the higher figure before the town, there can, nobody try to, try to add the fees to that.
Oh, really?
Is that?
Oh, that's...
I'm not, I'm not telling you. But that's happened twice that I know of in the past, where the fees weren't included and had to get, stand up and say, put the fees in, okay? Other than that, I only have one other problem with it, okay? And, we're, if we were to do this, I think the only other thing we'd have to do is increase the treasurer's salary, too. Because we can't, you can't be giving $42,12 to the tax collector and $42,000, whatever, to the treasurer. It should be a little bit of a, and I think they both do good jobs, okay? Don't get me wrong, but I think we would have, if we were to do that, we'd have to increase the salary for the treasurer, too.
I think that would be taken under consideration, but you'd have to help the board present that. I mean, Carrie's here, we're here to discuss as we carry, and that's pretty much all I want to discuss tonight.
Let me just say, this doesn't represent a pay raise for me. This is, this is my paycheck. This is the paychecks that I get. Well, it's, it's a decrease of potential.
Right. Nobody's saying it's a, I'm not saying it's an increase, Carrie.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, but it's gonna look like it is, number one.
Yep.
We can get up and say, no, it's not, because it is of that, but it's also gonna put the tax collector and the treasurer basically on an even basis, as far as what they make.
But I think her arguments, an easy argument to be made on the town...
Oh, I think it is, too.
I mean, we did it last year for a clerk's office, it was by the near fees, so I don't think it's a, it's an issue to...
I don't, I don't see it as a problem, I just think we're gonna have to, I don't have a problem doing it, but I just would like to then look at the treasurer's salary.
Okay.
I don't think it's out of line, you know, if you look closely at those surveys, I don't think it's out of line. I mean, you also have to pay attention to the hours worked, some only work 20 hours a week, and I'm, you know, I'm a full-time collector, but, and to your point of, of how aggressively, you know, I would, I would collect fees and taxes, honestly, it's my job to collect the taxes, and I'd rather collect them without the fees, because that means I'm collecting them on time. The fees only go on when they're late, and I would much rather have them on time. But I, I, I consider it my, you know, my duty to collect all, as many taxes as I can.
So are we... I have no problem doing it, we can send the letter, but do you mind if we throw $12 out, just make it $42,000, period?
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, can we, um...
You guys can throw in four or five each, Paul.
Could we list on the, the salary including fees?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Would you, would list, when you list the salary for the, the tax collector, could you put in there including fees?
I would put in excluding fees, for $42,000 excluding Chase.
Whichever way, so that, so that the problem doesn't come up.
I, I would be in favor of, of letting this happen, making it $42,000 and putting in the book that excludes fees. So it comes out to the same thing.
I would not only be in favor of that, I would be in favor of giving the treasurer a boost.
Well, we have to look, I think we definitely have to look at that.
He hasn't got a raise in five or six years.
Yeah. So let's look at that next Saturday, not this coming Saturday, next Saturday.
That raising fee was the first time the treasurer was, and that's what she wants to come forward, so...
Absolutely.
And she gets it, and she has to come in.
That's it. So I'll entertain a motion to send a letter to the Finance Committee that we agree with Carrie's request to make it a strictly salary position, exclude fees to the amount of $42,000 a year. Motion's made and seconded. Any requests, discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. We'll send the letter.
Thank you very much.
All right. Treasury warrants and invoices.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve vendor warrant number 79 in the amount of $800 dated 3/25/2015.
I'll second it. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve warrant number 80 in the amount of $40,858.93, and warrant number 81 in the amount of $624,001.41, dated March 30, 2015.
I'll second it. Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Fiscal year 2016 budget, I'm just gonna skip over, because we're going to be looking at that on Saturday for warrant articles, and next week for everything.
Yes, just a reminder, articles are due Thursday.
Articles are due Thursday.
Discussion Saturday.
Now, both this Saturday, there'll be a working session strictly for the board of selectmen. Uh, anybody that's known invited to come, but it'll be a working session for the board. Then we have a meeting on April 7th, which will be our regular meeting, and then we have a meeting on April 11th at 9 o'clock, which, working with IMCOM and so forth. So this, this Saturday will be 9 o'clock, then April 7th will be 7, April 11th will be 9. All right, other business. Let's move ash.
I have another.[1796.24]
I have nothing.
I do.
Okay, gorgeous.
Chair should be here in about a week, how's that?
That sounds good to me.
They should be here, I've contacted them today, they're on their way.
Are these going into some museum or something?
From your office.
Well, mad enough when they come in.
We, we did chuckle a little bit when we went to Westbrook Field last week to meet with the finance... Yeah, we did chuckle, same chairs.
Maybe we could bring them to the Fourth of July bonfire.
That's our next question.
There you go.
That's our next question, what are we going to do with the chairs?
Springfield flea market, it's all, all the time.
It's all this, we have probably 10 times as many down the town hall.
That's it.
That's where these should go.
Stage is full upstairs.
But Westbrook Field has these in their town hall.
Well, they can have some more, we'll donate.
All right, anything else?
Do we have a monitor for candidates tonight yet?
We're still looking, matter of fact.
Wow, do you think we should have it?
I do have a submission of questions, but nothing for moderator.
Okay, guess not then.
Nothing yet. We'll find somebody. No, we're not, sorry.
We will find somebody.
We'll find somebody, and still the...
But the deadline is...
Deadline's coming, oh, it hasn't been...
Thursday.
It's Thursday. And candidates tonight is the 28th, still, yes.
We'll have somebody, yes, Sue?
Just to let you know, too, an update on the Quaymark budget, they met with Westbrook Field last night, I don't know if you have got any updates from anyone, but they did put it back to their original budget that they put together, taking out the extra positions that they talked about at the la, that budget meeting that you went to, Dario. So they reduced it by $242,000 and some change.
They're coming for finance this week, correct? I will be there. Is it scheduled for 8 o'clock, Carrie, I'm sorry? Yes. So it's Thursday, we'll see what they have to say.
Okay, we will have a moderator by next week. All right, anything else to come before the board? I'd like to hand a motion to adjourn.
So will I.
All in favor? Meeting to adjourn.
Do you want to turn this movement?
Do you have any questions?